Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star of the official newspaper of the Borough of Bellmar and the Asbury Park Press on December 19, 2018. Notice that this meeting was posted on the Golden Garden Municipal Building.
Thank you, April. If everybody could join me in saluting the flag of our great nation.
(Inaudible).
Everybody, Rick, remain standing for a moment for moments silence for our troops, for families, and all our first responders. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We had a big crowd tonight. First thing we got on our workshop discussion tonight is we want to talk about the plan at Ninth and Main. Because of, there was a lot of work that went into it and the property is going to be redeveloped, but I invited our planner, or the owner and developer here tonight just to go through a little bit of what the project will look like. And there was a lot of, when I first became mayor, we had a discussion with the owner and developer. I'm not sure if everybody was aware of the first plan that was submitted. It was a plan that was built behind the bank, right up 10 feet from the neighbor's property line to west, or east of Ninth Avenue. So, and that was one of the, one of the big concerns we had. I said that I couldn't allow, I couldn't fathom a project like that going up 45 feet that close to the residential area. So, after a lot of discussion, we have our planner here tonight, Christine Abell. She worked with the planners, with the redeveloper. The plan went back and forth about seven or eight times to where it almost came in line with the master plan. It looked like a halfway decent plan to present, so we did that. The planning board voted it down four or five, but we are here tonight to see if it's going to move forward or not. So, what we did was we invited the developers here just to, so everybody's aware of what the building's going to look like and how far away from it it's going to be from the neighborhood. So, if I could have the developer owners come up and they're going to present and let everybody see what the project ended up being. And then we'll, we'll have some discussion with the council after that. So, council want to join me?
Sorry, I'm going to turn my back to you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is John Tykina. I'm the planner for the owner, Socom Pond LLC. My client has owned the property since 2016 and has been working to redevelop the property in a way that we think will be an asset and a benefit to the downtown here in Bellmore. Take you through a little bit of the property. It is on the corner. This is Main Street to the left, Ninth Avenue to the top. The property is lots five and seven. This is an aerial approximately 2018, showing the existing bank building on the corner. And then it goes back and encompasses the parking lot to the rear, including where the drive-through property is today. Overall property is a little over half an acre, well in excess of the size requirements of both the CBD zone and the, and the proposed redevelopment zone. So, before we get into the site plan too much, I'd like to talk to you exactly what the mayor said about what the building's going to look like. We are proposing a three-story residential, three stories of residential use on top of one story of a combination of office use and parking. This building would be proposed to be 45 feet high. That 45 feet of height is measured as defined in your ordinance to the deck of the roof. So, the top of the roof is 45 feet. And then there are permitted architectural embellishments that are indicated here with the little mansard roofs and the little peaked roofs around the property. Those architectural embellishments and the parapet exceed that 45 feet, but that's as provided for in the ordinance and the redevelopment plan. And we think that, that it provides a nice, a nice top to the building, you know, with a little bit of interest. You'll notice that along the facade, we have substantial areas of relief where the building goes in and out, both at the entries on the ground floor, as well as proceeding up the building where we have a great amount of variation of building facades and materials. The materials are a combination of brick and cedar style siding, whether they're cedar shake or cedar planks. And I say cedar in quotes because nothing's really cedar anymore. It's all a, a representation of it that will last for a long time in the shore elements here. But, you know, so it's natural looking materials. But again, a nice, a nice variation of materials along and then also at the ground floor to have some awnings and some, some elements that break up the facade and provide a, a defined base to the building, a middle of the building, and a top to the building. So, very attractive building, high quality materials. We think it's, would be a very nice asset to the Main Street neighborhood here. Continuing to the, to the site plan, so this takes the aerial that I showed at the beginning and superimposes the site plan on top of it. So, you see the building, which I'm outlining with my pointer here, which would be really focused on Main Street and focused, you know, towards the existing development. And then with substantial open areas that would be provided along the residential boundary, particularly to the east and to the south. So, we'd have a substantial open area that would exist along the residential boundary with the development, with the building really being focused up on Main Street and then wrapping around the existing Main Street buildings. So, it's more of a Main Street project than a quote unquote Ninth Avenue project. And then to zoom in a little bit more, a little bit more here, so this does the same thing to orient you again. Main Street is to the left, Ninth Avenue is to the top. So, we have a building that would occupy the predominantly up on the Main Street lot in the front and then wrap around to the Ninth Avenue side, again with substantial area of buffer along here. When the mayor talked earlier about the plan that quote unquote "he discovered" when, when he, when he came here, that, that plan had the bank building up in the front essentially remaining to be renovated and then had a very large residential building that was being built quote unquote "in the parking lot" and would have taken up much more of this parking lot than, than this proposal. So, you see that rather than having a large building in the area back here to the rear, we kind of pushed everything forward up closer to Main Street to provide a greater distance here along in the Ninth Avenue area. So, if you were to compare and contrast the current zone, the current zone would allow you to build a building 10 feet off the property line, which would be approximately like that. These are parking spaces. So, you know, parking space is usually, you know, nine by 18, so cut it roughly in half. And you'd be able to build a building all the way up at, at 10 feet. Now, the redevelopment zone went a step further than that and said, "Well, if you want to be a redevelopment, you have to do a few things here." And the number one thing you need to do is pull away from the residential boundaries. So, that pulls away to 30 feet, which would be roughly the middle of this parking aisle, would be where the redevelopment zone would permit the building to be. And we kind of went a step further than that and we ended up at about 40 feet where the building is proposed. So, we're pulling the building in from the boundaries and providing for appropriate parking. So, on this plan, you can see the parking spaces that are a combination of outside, so they're outside here along the boundary, and in the building. So, they're going to park under the building here and then also under the building over here. So, you come in the driveway from Ninth and you can park, come in to park in here. Our neighbor will be able to still get to his little driveway that's behind his building there and get to his garbage and all those types of things. And then you could park here and then enter the building here. A little bit more on the site plan. We do have an off, some office use in the front that would be entered from a, from right where the, you entered the bank today, right on the corner, continuing that, that commercial presence on, on Main Street. And then you would enter the residential piece from here from Ninth Avenue, coming in a doorway there, or coming in from the parking along, along the, the drive to the west or the drive here to the east. It is proposed to be 30 units, which would be in compliance with, with the redevelopment plan, could also be in compliance with, obviously with the zoning. And with that, it would provide for 45 parking spaces. So, the redevelopment plan provided for one space per bedroom. So, we'd have 15 one-bedroom units, 15 two-bedroom units, total of 45 bedrooms. So, we'd have a total of 45 parking spaces. And then the redevelopment plan kind of put on belt and suspenders and said, "Well, we also would like you to have a minimum of one and a half parking spaces per unit in case we decide, oh, we're going to do all one-bedrooms and try to have less parking." The redevelopment plan says, "No, no, no, you're not going to do that. We're going to let you, we're going to put belt and suspenders on and make sure you have at least one and a half spaces per unit." We think that's more than appropriate. The types of residents that we see in our, in our developments, we'd expect we're going to have predominantly one or two people living in the units, particularly with, with the one-bedrooms. That's typically what we see. And again, you end up with a little lower car ownership, little lower car usage by the nature of being on Main Street and really just by the nature of, of our resident. The people that select to live in this type of community on Main Street downtown are not the same folks that, that are, you know, occupying the single-family house on Inlet Terrace or D Street or Ninth Avenue. They're a little more urbane, a little more downtown oriented, and a little less car-oriented, car-oriented than, than usual. So, this is a, a treatment that shows the elevation along Ninth Avenue, again, in, in elevation rather than the perspective I showed before. But again, it shows the base of the building with the office space, with office windows up along Main Street, then our car entry to get into the garage parking underneath, then our car entry to get into the parking that is adjacent, that is wraps around the south and the east side of the building. And again, it shows, you know, in a representation of our, our neighbor to the east, where it shows their driveway, then our property line is literally right on the, on the line here. So, as I described before, in the current zoning, you could have a building right there that could be as tall as we are at 10 feet off the property line. The redevelopment plan provides it for the middle of the driveway. And we went 10 feet further to be 40 feet away from our neighbor so that we're pulled away as far as we possibly could. And again, you see the, the quality materials, the mix of materials, the different bays of the building, providing for vertical elements and a little bit of, of treatment at the top so that it's not a, just a flat roof all the way across. So, in conclusion, just a couple of things to, to bring up. Our redevelopment plan that we're talking about is generally more restrictive than the current zone is today. That's kind of the, the trade-off to say, "Hey, if you want to be a redevelopment, you want to work with the town in that way, you're going to answer to a higher standard than you would otherwise." We've been working with the professionals to result, to provide for a better plan that better meets than what, what is the town perceives to be the needs of Ninth and the needs of Main Street and to strike that balance. And it is a balance. We think that we're providing for a quality building with quality materials and a better aesthetic than you would get under the, the base zoning, which really doesn't have an architectural standard. We think we're providing for adequate parking. It's not overparked, but it's not underparked. We think it's the right amount for the user that we expect is going to occupy the units. We will have an office use on the ground floor, so it won't be retail, won't have that, that turnover feel. It's a little easier to manage that office parking than it is having to deal with retail parking in the in and out. The office is a little less intense. And we think that'll be a nice addition to the Main Street Renaissance that has been occurring here in Bellmore. You know, you see the quality projects being built all up and down Main Street and we're very excited to be, hopefully to be the next one. And Mr. Mayor, I'm available for any questions.
How do you get to the 45 feet with the four floors? Keeping the ceiling heights down or how did, how did you manage that?
Yes, it, it, you do two things. One is you do lower the ceiling heights, particularly on the first floor. So, you wouldn't have your typical 18 feet, you're going to cut it down to 15. Likewise, in the units, you're going to be limited to nine-foot ceilings in the units. And then it actually becomes a little more of an expensive build because you're going to need a, a more expensive construction assembly to do it in a shorter span than just doing a bigger beam. So, it's a little more expensive build for, for the builder, but we think it's worth it to, again, minimize the height, recognizing the concern that the community has had.
Yeah, because most of the buildings are, they have first floor retail and then there's two stories and they're still reaching 45 feet. So, I guess the store part, your, your first floor level will be like nine-foot ceilings instead of like the 16-foot ceilings that they have in the retail.
Right. Well, it's off, it's office, so it doesn't need to be 15 feet, it can be 10 feet. And then you can have two or three feet between the commercial use and the residential use. And then you limit yourself really to 10 inches in between the residential floors. And it, it's just a little bit more of an expensive build. You need to fit everything together a little tighter.
Yeah.
But we can make it work with the.
Because if we went back to the master plan, the CBD one, which is the Commercial Business District one, which that property is involved, is in right now, allows for four stories and 45 feet. Your four stories and I guess your 46 feet now, right? Is that what?
Correct. The redevelopment plan was 46 and we would meet either the 46 or the 45, depending on the direction we receive from the borough.
Okay. Any of the council have questions?
Yeah. I see that in the parking lot, there was a, like it was gated parking?
Yes.
I, I haven't seen that in other parts of the town. I was wondering if you could explain that and the rationale behind that.
We just think it's, it's best to control the parking with the gating. I think certainly for the parking that's underneath the building inside, we'd want that to be gated and closely controlled. For the parking that is outside, we could probably work with that to say, to determine whether that needed to be fully gated or not. But controlling it that way is generally best because it is a limited supply. So, you can't have, you know, kind of, you can't be as lenient as you would be in, in a situation when you're overparked, you don't mind if, if someone puts an extra car there or something like that. When you're, when you come down to having to manage the parking as closely as we do, we would typically want to control the access to it. But again, for the outside parking, that would be something we could work with. Yeah, and it'd be something we'd work, obviously with the planning board on site plan to say, how do you want to, you know, what do you think would be, would work best here?
I, I know we just have a couple of questions for our planner, so Christine could jump in. Jim, you have questions first?
Yeah. So, you know, I've been, been reading the articles in the, the print media that, that we have and, you know, that a lot of those articles conveyed some of the concerns that were expressed by residents at the planning board meeting, which are, you know, obviously concerned to me too. So, I want to better understand here what our options are as a council. In the way I understand it now, if we leave it the way it is, the CBD one zone, there is a four-story building that could be placed 10 feet off a residential property line. We do not have architectural influence into that. And there could be retail space, which would cause more parking density than this office space would have. Right? So, we have a choice to leave it and have the zone be what it is now, or we have a choice to change it to this, which was in part of the master plan, going back, I think, to 2016 or 2017. It was part of the prior administration that met, that, that administration approved. That would be more restrictive from a setback perspective. Is that correct?
So, I'm not sure this was part of the master plan in 2017. This was designated as an area in need of redevelopment in 2017.
Okay, part of redevelopment, okay.
Just to clarify that. But yes, under the CBD one zoning, a four-story, 45-foot building could be built 10 feet off the property line on Ninth Avenue. Obviously, they would need to go to the appropriate board for, you know, any variances they needed from parking and things like that. But they could argue, you know, they're in the downtown, space is limited, things like that. This proposed redevelopment, the redevelopment plan does, you know, say you're in a redevelopment area as part of that. It brings it back 30 feet away. There are higher standards. There are the architectural standards. So, yes, what you said is basically correct.
And what I noticed, another thing I read was that some people had questions was, "Why is it simply these, this lot and block and not the entire block, which was identified by the planning board to be redevelopment zone?" I mean, I think some people are concerned about like spot zoning and things like that.
Right, no, and I think that's, that's definitely a good and valid question. So, this entire portion of the block, the, you know, the lots along Main Street and then kind of the first lot back were designated as an area in need of redevelopment. But at this time, then the designation is really kind of the harder lift. You know, there's like a criteria that needs to be met, that, there's a whole process that goes through for that. This time, only these two lots were, you know, these are the only lots we really have a vision for what the redevelopment will look like. So, we didn't think it made sense to include the whole area in a plan if we didn't know what we wanted there. You know, we didn't think we wanted what's going on these two lots to be across the entire length of the block. So, we thought that it made sense at this time to just do the redevelopment plan for these two lots and then in the future, it could always be amended, a new plan could be written for the remainder of the redevelopment area.
Has the planning board discussed sort of just relooking at the master plan in town in general and getting public input and sort of revising and updating the, the master plan in general? Or haven't they gotten to that point yet?
So, I can't answer that question. Outside of last month's planning board meeting, that was the first planning board meeting I was at, so I don't.
Does the master plan come up for review on a regular basis?
Yes, so the master plan is required, a reexamination of the master plan is required about every 10 years. The master plan was last reexamined in 2016.
Does it have to wait 10 years or can you do it sooner?
No, you can do it sooner.
Okay. I know that there was a lot of concern about density on this lot, as far as, I guess, unit density, how many people would be living there and what that equates to in the amount of parking that would be required. Can you just address what your professional opinion is as to whether the, the amount of parking provided for in this design, if it, if it's sufficient and meets the needs?
Right. So, I do think the amount of parking provided is sufficient and meets the needs for this particular type of use. As the developers, planners stated, this will be a mix of one and two-bedroom units. And the redevelopment plan does require one parking spot per bedroom. So, that means the two-bedroom units are required to have a minimum of two parking spots associated with them. The one-bedroom units are required to have the higher standard of the 1.5 units per bedroom. So, that way, you know, if there are two people living in a one-bedroom or three people living in a two-bedroom, where someone has a guest, there is a little bit of wiggle room and space for those people to park on site.
Okay. Okay, and in the CBD one zone, which is the current zone outside of the redevelopment plan, the, the numbers look a little bit less. Like I'm looking at, one bedroom is 1.8 and the two-bedroom is, is two. I mean, does it about equal out?
So, that, that's not just the, the CBD one zone, that's the borough's parking standards, you know, across the entire borough.
Okay.
And they are based on the RSIS standards, which is the state residential site improvement standards, which is put forth by the Department of Community Affairs. And that's just a, kind of to provide a standard across the entire state. And that's just a, kind of to provide a standard across the entire state. If, you know, so each town doesn't kind of, one town doesn't require five spaces and another town requires seven, something like that, per bedroom. The Department of Community Affairs has given guidance that, you know, if you're close to transit, things like that, they really encourage kind of a lesser standard than their standards. So I think that this parking proposal is in line with that, given the proximity to the train station.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have a, an analysis of what the current property brings in in tax revenue versus what this building would bring in in tax revenue?
If we do, I don't know.
Tom, do you have anything?
No. I have a lot of questions, but they just haven't been answered yet. I want to hear from the public.
Christine, I just have a couple more. Now, if this was built according to the master plan, and it can go ten foot off the back property line, if the developer put all underneath the first floor of parking and had the full parking requirement and built, built it out, the forty-five feet, everything, according to the CBD one code now, and they met all the parking requirements, they can increase density if they can meet the parking requirements, correct?
Um.
Because I don't think we have anything with density.
Correct.
The density is controlled by parking.
Right. So, kind of just to frame that a different way, if you don't mind, the CBD one zone district does not have a density requirement. So this redevelopment plan puts a cap on the number of permitted units in this area. If they were in the CBD one zone district, they would be permitted to, you know, build as many units as the site could accommodate, as long as they met, the borough does have minimum standards for unit size, as long as they met those minimum standards.
Right. But what I'm getting at is if they did all that, they wouldn't have to come before us. They might not even have to come before a planning board to build it.
Correct.
If they met all the standards on everything, they could just go right and get permits and build it. So we're putting more restrictions on them than what would be in the CBD one.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I think that's all I have. You know, the thing is, is I'm not sure if we'll vote on it tonight or not, but maybe you could start thinking about some recommendations for us as we move forward.
Sure.
All right. You guys have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. I want to thank you for coming in and showing us exactly what it's going to be. So I do appreciate that. Christine, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on in our workshop, Bellmar Historical Society is here. So if you guys want to come up. We have our one-hundred-and-fifth, one-hundred-and-fiftieth-year birthday coming up in 2022.
We do. Happy birthday. Good evening. Thanks for giving the Bellmar Historical Society some time today to speak to you. I'm going to be the spokesman for the Historical Society, because I accepted the challenge to pronounce sesquicentennial at the microphone.
That's pretty good. I don't know if I could have made that one.
I've got two more times to say it. We've got other members here if you have questions. But I will be telling you that the purpose of our request to speak tonight is bring the attention to the sesquicentennial, one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Bellmar in the year Although it's two years away, it seems far away, but we believe to prepare and organize for such an historic event properly, this time is needed. And we will need the support of the mayor and council. The Historical Society, of course, would like to participate, but we do understand that such an event would need a committee similar to the Bellmarty Gras one-hundredth anniversary in 1972. A committee with leadership, organizational, and marketing skills necessary for the success of such an historic event. We would like to sit down at an organizational meeting led by the mayor, borough administrator, council members, to discuss the sesquicentennial, that's my third time, of Bellmar, at your convenience. We do have ideas, fifty-eight, right, Pat?
Right.
Fifty, and counting. But really, for this big success, we know that our membership is historical right now in age. So we would like to reach out and get some younger people in town that would like to grab hold of this and organize it, market it, and so that, come in 2022, it doesn't have to be a one-day event. We'd like to do it through the whole year. Main Street could benefit. We can get the beach badges celebrating the Bellmar one-hundred-and-fifth. There's all sorts of ideas to make this go right. Time capsules for the high school, for the grammar schools to bury in town. So that, at our two-hundredth anniversary, you're all invited. It would be, it would tie it in, I think, for a town like Bellmar, and we can see where it's developing, we could hold back and see what Bellmar looked like in 2022 at our one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. So you have any questions? I'd love to talk to you about it.
Well, you're right. Two years will go quick. So I think the best, the best probably thing would be to contact our business administrator and then let's set up a meeting, you know, either right after the holidays and, you know, if we have to put somebody as a point person in charge and find somebody to really start working on it. Because you're right, two years are going to go, will come quick.
Right. I just want to make it clear that the Historical Society doesn't want to take the point on this. We would really like the town to do it.
No, I get it. Yeah, I get it.
And we would support with all the information we have. We've got plenty of ideas, plenty of information that could go along to really do well.
All right. Yeah, no, I got it. But if we set up a meeting and then we'll start strategizing on how to set it all up and who's going to do what and.
Okay.
Get it underway.
Now, the test for pronouncing sesquicentennial goes through, okay?
All right. All right. Thanks, Brian. Okay. Next, we have the Phoenix. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council, and public. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Amy Emily. I am the New Jersey chapter manager for the Phoenix. I'm also the senior yoga instructor and a person in recovery. So I thought it'd be really important to mention that, as a person in recovery, in about 2013, I didn't have a life like I have today. It was really dark, not full of hope and joy as it is today. So with the recent epidemic that is going on, I just thought it'd be important to mention that as a person in recovery. In 2013, I realized I could no longer live with drugs, alcohol, and the other toxic behaviors that go along with that lifestyle, and began to lean on my community with yoga, meditation, and group fitness, and started a healing journey. In 2015, I founded a nonprofit organization called Root to Rise. We brought yoga, meditation, group fitness activities to recent, sorry, local treatment facilities in Monmouth County. We also provide services for the middle of town, sorry, middlesex juvenile detention centers, youth shelters, and other providers in the area. Currently, we join forces with the Phoenix, which is why I'm here today, is a national nonprofit organization with a similar mission. So I'm going to read the mission word for word. The mission of the Phoenix is to provide a sober, active community to individuals who suffer from a substance use disorder and to those who choose to live a sober life. Using a peer support model, we help members heal and rebuild their lives while also striving to eliminate stigma around recovery. So currently, we're located at 911 Main Street, right down the street here, where we provide free yoga, meditation, group fitness, and other activities. We partner with Ocean CrossFit right in Neptune, where we provide weekly free group fitness classes, CrossFit, and other activities throughout the month. Our purpose in being here today is that we're having a ribbon cutting on Saturday with you. So please come on out. We have an open house all day from 9:30 to 1:00, where we'll have yoga, a mindfulness social, ribbon cutting at 11:00, some food. I just wanted to really let the community know that we're here. Oftentimes, people walk past our facility and think that we're a yoga studio, never knew we were here. Especially, a lot of folks know that the Shoreline Club exists, but there's other resources in addition to that. So we're not meant to replace any sort of recovery community, just to add. We have to use everything that's available to us to combat what we're up against. So we'll be here till the end of the meeting if you have any other questions, and we have schedules with us and cards.
Okay. Thank you. And congratulations on your recovery. Okay. Is there anything else on workshop? Anybody else want to bring anything up for workshop? Just one thing I want the council members to start thinking about, the beach director has come to us to say, because we don't know if that bill is going to pass for the children's badges or where it is. Gene Corry has suggested that we move the beach badges lower down in age to fourteen, but that's something that the council will think about, and we're not going to do anything with it tonight. And the other thing that they're looking to do is to move the time of bicycles, only allow them up till eight o'clock, because the nine o'clock, they're starting to get an awful lot of bicycles on the boardwalk and then put it in line with, like, Spring Lake and the other towns around. So we're not going to do anything about it tonight, but maybe if the council wants to start thinking about it and see if it's something that we want to contemplate. I know Gene Corry should probably be at the next meeting to talk about it. But we can start thinking about it, because summer will be upon us very quickly, like the two years will be. All right. Moving on, petitions. Anybody have a petition for the council? I wasn't moving on till I got it. Yeah, you can hand it to April.
So this petition has a little over two hundred signatures.
All right, if you'd just speak into the mic and then give us your name first and...
My name's Michelle Lomas. I live at 609 Ninth Ave. The petition presented has a little over two hundred signatures from the town speaking out against four-story building, against this ordinance. If you need more signatures, we have plenty more to gain. With enough time, I'm sure we can rack in a lot more if needed.
Yeah, I'm sure you heard the presentation, that this ordinance puts more restriction on the developers than what the current ordinance has. So if we go, let the developers not even come to us and go with the current ordinance, you'd have a building ten feet from your property line. And that's one of the things that we did not want to happen.
I mean, as a town, we don't want a four-story building.
Well, the problem is that the master plan already allows for it. But we'll take your petition into consideration when we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, reports of minutes. April?
Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay. Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Mayor Wassifer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
All right. Reports of council. Councilman McCracken.
Thank you, mayor.
Oh, that's my car, I'm sorry.
Whoa, what did you say? Did he say?
I skipped you over. That's all right.
Thank you. So past several weeks, when's the last time we had a meeting? It's been a bit, right? I attended the League of Municipalities Conference in Atlantic City. There were two sessions that I found of interest. One was on public information, media management, and social media, and how that ties into what we're doing here. There was presentation from the Middletown Information Officer and things that they do. I took some ideas away from that, and I will be passing them along to the borough administrator and our multimedia director. The other session that I attended was the ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Commission, had a session, and I got a lot of insight into the structure of that commission, all the bureaus that are inside of it. I didn't realize how big it actually was, the various things that they're currently doing and working on, and also insight into the various types of licenses and the underlying legalities. So I feel a little bit more informed as far as ABC rules and regulations go now. There was, the PTO fundraiser was a couple of weeks ago at the Beach House Brewery that was very well attended, and it looks like they would have raised a lot of funds. I think that that was a great event, and I hope that they continue that. There were three ribbon cuttings two Saturdays ago. I got to attend two out of the three. Every Little Heart, which is a children's clothing store, opened in the plaza. Antoinette Rose moved back to Main Street, and Jersey Mike's moved in on Fifth Avenue. So welcome all of those businesses to town. And that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman McCracken?
The Bellmar Housing Authority met last night. For those of you who haven't had a chance to drive by there, there is a, they've done a fantastic job with making that building look very nice for the holidays, including a heart or a star that the superintendent of the building made and is on, is on top of the building. You'll be happy to know that the commissioners approved paying their annual pilot of $15,233 to Bellmar, so that revenue will be coming in before the end of the year. Currently, the administration there and the staff are doing annual inspections on all the units, particularly the ovens, the stoves, checking for water leaks, making sure everyone's alarm system works properly and the doors closed properly to keep all of our residents who live in there safe. The family or the resident who was hit on July 1st in the crosswalk there in front of the building continues to recover, and we need to keep her in our prayers. She's hoping to return home for the holidays, which would be absolutely fantastic. And there were excellent feedback from the residents who did attended, who did attend the meeting about the superintendent. His name is Mike, Mike Carr, how well he works with the residents along with all the staff and the administration there. So the building looks beautiful, it's well-run, it's well-managed, and people seem pleased. They even had a Thanksgiving dinner together with themselves. The next shade tree commission, we did not have one in November. We decided to do a combined meeting with November, December, considering the holidays and the dates of the meetings. It's currently scheduled for December 10th, but there are some shade tree commissioners who don't have a conflict with that date, so it looks like we're going to be moving it to Wednesday, the 18th, at the Bellmar Library in the downstairs room there. But once that date is finalized, I will let April know, so she can put that up on the website and the calendar.
Thank you. Council President Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving. Very nice. I also attended the League of Municipalities Conference. I went to a couple of workshops that are environmentally oriented. One was about recycling. I found really, really informative. And one of the things, I'm happy to say Bellmar's picked up, is they spoke about an app called Recycle Coach. I have it on my phone already. It's right in the App Store. You can get it on your Android, too. And Bellmar is using it. It's on our website. One of the things people find the most confusing is what can you recycle and what you can't. I won't take your time up now. If anybody wants to talk to me after the meeting, I can explain. Recycling is just not, not as simple as one would hope. There are a lot of things that you would think should be recycled, could be recycled, they can't be. Recycle Coach helps you with that. There's certain kinds of plastics, certain kinds of things that can't go into the recycling stream. Other things that are problematic are wet paper. If your paper gets wet, it's garbage, don't put it in your recycling. Shredded paper, things like that. So the app is really helpful, and I really recommend that you get it. If there is a change to our recycling schedule, as was, is being discussed, that would be reflected in Recycle Coach. You'll be able to see when things are picked up, right? And it's very, very handy. I want to thank Director Campbell and DPW. We have another block of dune planting completed between 14... We have another block of dune planting completed between 14th and 15th Avenue. That was done right before the holiday. I haven't actually had a chance to see it yet because I haven't been here, but I'm really looking forward to going down and seeing it. Director Campbell says it went really, really well. And one of the things that I'm happy to report is that it only cost $350 to do that one block of plants. The Environmental Commission got a, made a contact with a nonprofit nursery. Their prices are so much lower than what we've used in the last couple of years, which is also good news because the Environmental Commission in the borough had applied for a grant to complete the, complete the plantings from the Nature Conservancy. And unfortunately, we are not selected for that grant. We didn't meet their criteria primarily because the plants are too far away from the water. That's basically what it said. But, if it's only $350 for one block of planting, I think what we need to do is just work with the DEP because they have to approve it as part of our beach management plan. Work with them, see what we can do, and maybe in a couple of years, we can get the whole beach done. And then, we can start to watch those dunes come up and protect our boardwalk and our buildings. The Belmar Environmental, excuse me, the Belmar Environmental Commission is completing its end-of-year report. They're working hard on it. A lot of emails flying back and forth about that. They want to have it here to Mayor and Council by the next meeting, so we're looking for that to be here. All right, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things for me. I want to thank Mike Campbell and his crew for putting up all the Christmas lights all around town. They look good, we look nice and festive. The Christmas tree lighting is December 6th, this Friday night, so if anybody can make it out to that. We have two retirements coming up, and I want to wish them well. Sergeant Chris Lynch and the Police Department is retiring January 1. And our, and Kathy Enriquez, who is our Human Resources Coordinator, is also retiring January 1, and I want to wish her well. The other thing I want to talk about is I want to commend the director or business administrator, here you go, I'll put you back there again, no, Business Administrator, Kersha Bobb, and our engineer, Peter Ravakian, for securing a $337,000 grant for paving of 15th Avenue. They worked really hard on that, and I just wanted to bring that up. We just got it approved, so as soon as 12th Avenue is done, we're going to be working on 15th Avenue to get that paved. And I, too, was down at the League of Municipalities. We did a lot of work down there, a lot of good work, and had a lot of seminars and met with a lot of people that we're going to bring in to start talking about how to update kiosses and stuff like that. So, it was, it was a good convention. So, and we were all down there, working hard for Belmar. And that's my report. All right, we're going on to public session on anything on the resolution calendar. Yes?
Gary Lockwood, Fourth Avenue. With all this redevelopment on Fifth Avenue, the one that's going up here...
This is just for the resolution? Anything on the resolution calendar? We'll have a public session for the redevelopment stuff. Is there anything you have to do with the resolutions? Okay. You'll have a chance to speak on that. Okay, seeing none, April?
Can I have a motion to close the public session?
Motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Second? What was the motion? Carvelli? Okay. Councilman Brennan? Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Okay, now on the ordinance for the redevelopment. We'll open it up to the public, for public, yes.
Hello, my name is Brett Lomas. I live at 609 Ninth Ave. So, the last time I was here, I was told by council members that the ordinance just adds these two properties to the zone. That's not correct, right? Is it, is it a plan for, uh, actually?
You can just pull it out and hold it. Yeah, it's wireless, you can hold it.
All right, I'll do this. So, um, yes, it's not going to be... Thanks, sorry. So, the last time I was here, at the first reading of this, I was told that this ordinance adds the two properties to the redevelopment zone, but that's not correct. It is a plan, redevelopment plan for these two properties. It doesn't add them to the zone.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
And, because these, these two lots were added as, as the whole block was added to the redevelopment zone, or declared to be in the area in need of redevelopment a few years ago, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was my mistake.
Yeah. Well, I think there was, it wasn't just, yeah, I think, I think there was a couple...
Yeah, so, and subsequent to that, there's been a lot of conversation to hash out exactly what this all is, and I can assure you now I have a better understanding, so.
Thanks. So, at the time that it was declared an area in need of redevelopment, were you aware that, or are you aware that at the time, the planning board was told that the redevelopment designation was needed so that the property owners on that block could simply clean up their lots by taking advantage of special programs?
Well, yes. We weren't here in 2000, I think 16.
Right.
But, there would normally have been a planning report to the planning board recommending...
So, I was told by a few planning board members at the time that that was their understanding. Their understanding was they were doing this so that, so that these owners of these properties could clean up the lots by taking advantage of programs.
You could always clean up the lot, you don't need, but if the area is designated as an area in need of redevelopment, then the thought is, or they thought, that there is an area that needs to be cleaned up. But, there would have been a planning report from the township or the planning board professional planner, which would have been a little more detailed than that, and I'm sure that's on files at the town. But, that was back in 2016, so what a planning member told you is...
Okay. So, the agenda and the text on the ordinance that was out there says that the planning board recommended the plan. Is that, that's not right, right? The planning board voted, voted the plan, did not recommend it?
The planning board, you're, well, you're correct. The ordinance that was prepared on first reading was prepared before the planning board meeting, so here we are now.
Okay.
The planning board, as I understand it, voted five to four that it felt the proposed plan is not in conformance with the master plan.
Okay. But, the ordinance on the agenda tonight says that the planning board recommended the plan.
I understand. So, if the, if the ordinance goes forward this evening, we obviously have to change that typo.
Okay. What do you mean by...
Well, we'd have to change it to reflect...
Because I guess what I'm saying is, is, you know, when something like that's posted, members of the community are getting their information from the posted ordinance, and the posted ordinance says that the planning board recommended it, but the planning board did not recommend it. So, and the reason that the planning, the planning board, their determination was that this plan does not, is inconsistent with the master plan, I believe, right? So, the plan, number one, doesn't comply with the master plan, and number two, is outside the original intent of declaring the area in need of redevelopment in the first place. So, is the master plan supposed to serve as a guide for the development of our, of the town? Right? And in the master plan, under the, there's, right at the back, on the big heading that says, "Recommended Future Land Use." It says that land use should preserve the character of existing neighborhoods. And, so, these lots have frontage on both Main Street and Ninth Ave, right? And the presentation today said that it is a Main Street building, and I would, I would take issue with it being called a Main Street building, because as we learned at the, at the planning board meeting, the vast majority of the frontage is on Ninth Ave. In fact, 83% of the frontage is on Ninth Ave, and 17% of the frontage is on Main Street. So, it's not a Main Street building, it's a Ninth Ave building. And this does not preserve the character of the existing neighborhood of Ninth Ave if this is a Ninth Ave building. The existing character of Ninth Ave is two and a half stories. The next question is, does the master plan say anything specific about these lots? It does, right at the back. Block 95, these lots are specifically mentioned in the master plan, and what it says is that they should be included in the Seaport Redevelopment Plan. That the Seaport Redevelopment Plan is the plan that should govern this. So, why write a new plan, a new redevelopment plan, for just these two properties if the master plan already states that these two properties should be governed by the Seaport Redevelopment Plan? And I'll tell you why. Building height, floor-to-area ratio, and parking. This plan allows for a four-story building. The Seaport Redevelopment Plan allows for three and a half. The floor-to-area ratio in this plan is two. The Seaport Redevelopment is one and a half. Now, two and one and a half don't sound that far from each other, but what's that really mean? The draft plan allows for a 46,000 square foot building, whereas the Seaport Redevelopment floor-to-area, floor-to-area ratio would allow only a 34,000 square foot building. In simpler terms, this draft plan allows for a 35% larger building than the Seaport Redevelopment Plan would allow. 35% bigger. Next, parking. This proposed plan calls for, they said earlier, I had to redo the math a little bit while I was sitting down, because they said they were going to provide 45 residential parking spaces. Now, I'm assuming that they're not providing the, the non-residential parking spaces for the offices or any of that stuff, because they didn't mention that in the 45. But, let's just go with the 45. Under Seaport, that 45 would be 60. So, it's a third less, 33% less parking spaces under this plan than the Seaport Redevelopment. So, this plan allows for four stories instead of three and a half, a 35% bigger building, and it was, if you did the retail, it would have been 40%, but now it's 33% fewer parking spaces. So, the question is, who wrote the plan?
The plan was finalized by the township engineer, Mr. Ravakian's office.
Okay. In what capacity was the developer involved?
Well, I don't know. This plan, I suspect, started before we were here.
Right.
Certainly, the developer was involved in the plan. This is property, sure.
And all the, you had mentioned that there were plans that went back and forth a few times, right? So, there were negotiations going on in informal meetings, right, with the developer. And so, when did the coordination begin for this, for this specific plan?
Really, a day, a day, you mean?
Yeah, that, you know, I don't need a specific day.
I don't, I can't tell you this.
Well, the original one was back in 16 or 17.
Seventeen, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, like, just this, just this plan.
I, I, I don't...
I think it was about a year. I think back in January is what I saw.
Oh, no, that's, that's, I'm sorry? 2017, what is this?
What I'm, I'm talking about this specific, not the last one, right? Not the last building plan that was presented before? Yeah, the, the, the re, the restart of the development on this.
It wasn't a restart. Well, I gave marching orders to our planner to say that there's no way that it's going to be built 10 feet from your property line. So, and where you're getting a Main Street project, I told him this, or Main Street, I told him this has to be a Main Street project. I didn't say it was Main Street. I said, it has to be pushed up, the banks got to come down.
The presenter said that, I'm sorry.
So, I said, it's got to be a Main Street project, and that was the direction that I gave our planners to work with their planners and our staff to work with them to come up with a plan. Looking at the master plan and looking at what the CBD 1 allows, our planner was given the direction to get as close to that as they can to reduce the size of the building, and they take it away from your property line, and so that it fits closer into the Main Street area. And that was the direction. And when Christine, our planner, come and said, "We're really close, and I think that this will really work," that's when we went forward to move it to us and then on to the planning board.
I, also, I want to, I want to thank you for, I know that you have negotiated on, on our behalf for this. So, I don't want you to take it as me attacking you in any way, because I know that you have negotiated.
No, I get it. You've got concerns. You live right there. I, I mean, I take your concerns very seriously because you're the one that's living right there.
So, on the, on the plan, there was a DMR, DMR architects? What did, what did they, what was their role in the, like, what did they do?
I think that they were retained by the developer.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
They were the, the Borough's planner at the time that this was started, in 2017.
Oh, okay.
Previous township planner, Borough planner.
So, they worked for the Borough?
Back in a year or two ago, yes.
Okay.
Maybe three years ago.
So, the plan says it was prepared by DMR architects, right?
And then it says it was modified or finalized by Mr. Ravakian.
Yeah, right, exactly. Who paid for DMR architects?
The developer's going to be paying for all of these fees.
Okay. So, the developer wrote the plan and then paid for the town, and then paid for the planner to, to, to put it together, right?
No, no, the money gets put in escrow, and we take it out and pay. It has to be paid on the Borough side. They don't have control over our planners, if that's what you're getting at.
Okay, so the...
The Borough's paying.
Okay, so the developer pays the money to the Borough, and then the Borough takes that money and then pays the...
Right, but they don't have no control over our planners.
There's application fees and escrow fees.
Right.
So, they have to post the fees, and they would pay the planning board engineer, the planning board attorney to do whatever has to be done, same, same concept.
Okay. So, but the plan was, the developer was, the developer had a part in creating, putting together the plan, right?
Well, they put the plan together, just so you're clear.
Yes.
They put the plan together, they present it to us.
That's what I...
Our staff and our planner look at it and say, "No, this is not going to work. Send it back and redo it, and this is what we need." It went back and forth, I bet you seven, seven times they had to redraw it, until our planner was, was satisfied of what, that it met almost close to what the CBD 1 was.
I'm not so sure we're consistently talking about the same plan. So, there's the master plan...
Right.
That the zoning board approved.
Yes.
The redevelopment, and then there's the site plan.
Right.
So, the developer, correct me if I'm wrong, council, obviously works on the site plan. The original building that the developer had on that site, when this was proposed two years ago or something, was 10 feet off the property line of the closest house. We said, "That's not acceptable to do this, to have a building this size next to, this close to a house." So, the option that we had to provide relief to the, that the residents in those areas was to incorporate this at the planning board's original recommendation into the Seaport Redevelopment area, so we would have more control, and the setbacks would be increased, providing relief to the residents who live in that area. Is that correct?
It's all correct, and it's in...
So, this is in the Seaport Redevelopment? Sorry.
And also, you have to take into account that the planning board determined after a public hearing that this area needed to be redeveloped. It was, I don't, they used, usually use the word bladed area, but they don't use it anymore because it sounds so terrible. But, it was an area that needed to be cleaned up.
Yeah, and we have a letter from the planning board attorney that says, in large part, the plan technically remeets the requirements of the master plan. We asked for a report from the planning board attorney regarding that.
But, they ultimately voted no that it does not? Right, it's not consistent with the master plan.
Question, the answer, yes?
Well, I was just, I was trying to... Well, I was just, I was trying to, I think Councilman McCracken had the question. It was like, so did the, the planning board said that this did not meet, was inconsistent with the master plan, correct?
Oh, the master, yes, that's correct. And the land use law allows the township, the governing body, if they wish, to supersede that planning board vote. So that's, that's still in there.
Has there been a traffic study looking at the impact of this draft plan? Traffic study?
Once a plan is prepared, it would still, presumably for the sake of the discussion that there's a plan that's approved, it still has to go to the planning board. You still have to have a site plan approval.
No, I'm talking about for the redevelopment plan.
I'm not aware of a traffic plan yet. There would have to be a traffic plan at the time that they go for their approvals or for the planning board.
So I guess, I guess my, my confusion is, if this plan is approved, then the developer would not need any bulk variances at all, right? Because everything would be within the scope of this plan and within the limits of this plan. So if you're saying now that, you know, they need forty-five parking spaces, right? And they provide forty-five parking spaces, then there's, the, the limits are set already before there's a study done to see what the limit should be?
Well, parking plan and a traffic plan are two different things.
Well, I was getting to the parking plan.
Well, like any, like any other zoning.
Parking study.
Consider this to be effectively a zoning ordinance. Like any other zoning ordinance. If an applicant meets the criteria in a zoning ordinance, it meets, it doesn't need a variance, same, same thoughts.
Right, so we don't need a traffic study or a parking study yet?
Well, that would be determined.
But as long as they're under the limits that we set now, then they wouldn't need one in the future either?
That would be determined by the engineer and the planning board. The engineer would give his report to the planning board if he thought it was required.
For instance, a traffic study might, and I don't know, it's way down the road. Traffic study might suggest some off-track improvements that are required by the developer. Maybe something needs to be done with the streets or whatever. So those are things that would be determined at the time of a site plan application with a traffic study.
Okay, so there hasn't been a traffic study or a parking study. I did a, an informal citizen parking study, you know, in the past couple of weeks, right? So on the lot, right, where the teller, there's, there's about ten parking spots. And with the current density of zero, there's over twenty cars that park there daily. In the municipal lot next door, that is on Tenth Avenue, there's fourteen spots. And daily parking in the winter is seventeen daily parkers there in fourteen spots. You might say, how do they do that? Well, they pull on all the different sides and things that aren't really spots. So all of these spots are already used. And I see, I saw that the, the, the building plan had a, had a gate and it sounded like there wasn't going to be any public parking there. So where are these, you know, seventeen, twenty, these twenty-five, thirty cars that are in the winter, where are they going to go?
Well, can I ask you a question? Because I've been driving through there daily and also have done an informal study.
Yeah.
And the lot that is behind Taylor Hardware.
That's the lot, yeah, that's the lot I was talking about, there's fourteen spots.
It seems to me that there are vehicles there that don't move. There's a trailer there for one thing that I know doesn't move. Another car seemed to be consistent. I brought this to the attention of the Borough administrator because there are also signs there, no parking six AM to eight AM.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know if people are like parking extra cars there permanently or what's going on. But I think that's something we really need to look at. I mean, we've got partial parking issues all over town.
Yep.
You know, at the train station and at the, at the Piano Plaza lot and stuff like that. And, you know, I think the parking situation really needs to be looked at because those, there are those signs there. And there, there seems to be vehicles and other equipment that don't move. And if that's supposed to be for shopping and transient, you know, people can't be allowed to permanently park cars there.
I agree that there's definitely a parking problem. I think the, the solution though is not to reduce how many parking spots are needed on new developments, right? And, and I am not going to be comparing this to CBD one. The reason why I'm not is because the master plan says that this should be Seaport redevelopment plan, right? So we don't need a special plan for these, for this property if it's going to be less restrictive than the Seaport redevelopment, right? Now, there are two recent buildings on the corners of Main that border residential lots like this one does. The new Fifth Ave building, right, with the, the Jersey mics in it. And the building on Eighth Ave, which is the Staygold, the Staygold building. Do you know what their setbacks are from the residential lot behind them? They are a hundred feet. And the setback, in, the setback in this plan is thirty feet. Now, I know that they said it was going to be forty, but the plan says thirty, so they could do thirty, right? And thirty, I counted off, at the planning board meeting, we were here and I, I did a Perry Mason thing and counted it off, right? But it's basically from here to the wall, right? Thirty feet from here to the wall. So, and I thought that that was a great improvement and I know that, I know that that was, that's a, that's a, that's definitely an improvement, right? Until I saw how big thirty feet really is, and it's, it's, it's still close. So this building's going to have thirty apartments, it's going to be four stories. It could be thirty, they said forty, and I'll take them at their word, forty, but the plan says thirty for my house. I've got two kids, their bedroom is on that side of the house. Right now, they see sunsets out their window. This passes instead of sunsets, there's going to be apartments staring into my kid's window. How many of those thirty apartments are going to be facing my daughter's window? And it's thirty feet close enough to see in her window. And now do you think thirty feet is far enough when other similar buildings have a hundred-foot setback? Now, I'm not, I'm not poor, but I don't have a ton of money. I don't have the kind of money it takes to get a property added to a redevelopment zone. And I certainly don't have the kind of money it takes to get a property its own zoning ordinance written by the town. But I contribute to my community in the ways that I can. I've been a teacher at Madison Square High School for ten years. I've coached rec soccer. I'm the committee chair for the Cub Scout PAC forty here in Belmar. And I coach wrestling at Belmar Elementary School. I'm actually supposed to be at a match tonight, but I had to come here instead. I love Belmar and I know that you love Belmar too. And that's why you serve on the council. But let's be clear, it isn't our job to make sure that developers can maximize how much money they can make. I'm asking you to vote no tonight. And then, and then make this plan reasonable. Four stories with a thirty-foot setback from residents isn't reasonable, that's maximizing profit. And, you know, we, we have a place on Ninth Ave, our house. It was a, it was a vacant rooming house that had been foreclosed on. It was an actual animal house with, with animals living in it. But we're restoring it to a residential home, right? And my investment in the community's got to account for something too. And what makes this developer so special to get spot zoning ordinances at the expense of everybody else?
I, I don't consider a spot zone.
Tonight? Tonight and at the planning board meeting, there's a, there was a lot of talk about CBD one and a handout comparing this to CBD one. And yes, I'll admit, this is, this is better than CBD one, it is. But that's, that's a false choice, right? It's not one or the other. CBD one versus this draft is a false dilemma. You're not limited to only CBD one or this draft. You sent this draft back multiple times, you can send it back again. It's your ordinance, you can make it whatever you want. Choice number three is to redraft the plan. It's not a dilemma here, it's an opportunity. There's a lot of people here and a lot of people that signed the position, petition. And it's a chance to show where you stand. The people of this town need you to speak for us with your vote to show that, you know, we voted for you. Show us that you'll fight for us and not rubber stamp a, a plan written by a developer. And don't be tempted to vote for this because it is marginally better than CBD one, it's a false choice. Vote no because this isn't the right plan, it's not the ideal plan. It doesn't have to be four stories. It can have, it can have a larger setback, like the comparable buildings. It's an ordinance that you're voting on, you can make it say what you want it to. You don't have to only listen to the developer, you represent us, you can listen to us also. I know that the council has already done a lot of negotiating with the developer with our interests in mind. And I'll say that the plan, it's not that far off from being reasonable. When you vote no, I hope that you take all the support that you see in this room and in that petition. Against this plan, I hope that strengthens your hand in future negotiations. And I am not against the development of this lot, but I want a plan that reflects the resident, of what the residents want. Four stories isn't just about this building, right? Four stories on the east side of Main or next to any residential zone is too much. Thirty feet of setback is too little and not making improvements to rainwater management isn't good enough. Lowering the number of parking spaces needed when we have a parking problem already is not good enough. At the planning board meeting, there are a lot of comparisons with other towns being thrown around. We're not Spring Lake, we're not Seagurt, but we're not Hoboken or Arisberry Park either. Instead of changing the rules to suit the developer, let's change the rules to what the town needs and wants so that we don't constantly have to be in this battle, right? We don't want to be in this battle all the time, depending on whether it's this or any other of the, of the developments. I hope that you vote no. If you vote tonight, and I hope that you send this plan back to the drawing board this time. Let's do it out in the open and behind closed doors. Thank you.
I just, I just like to, to clarify a couple of things because you brought up some very good points. And if you could share your notes with the clerk, I think that would be good so that we could, we could look at those. April, who wrote this plan, these two options? We've got the CBD one, we've got the Seaport redevelopment plan. How were those plans in this community developed going back to?
Well, the CBD one zoning's been in place long before a lot of us.
Okay.
And then the.
And that's the, that's the zone that allows for the ten-foot setback?
Right.
And the forty-six-foot high buildings?
Right.
Okay.
And then the Seaport redevelopment plan was started in, I think it was two thousand three by the Marin Council. And there were several planning board hearings because that plan has been amended several times over the years. And then this redevelopment pro, plan started in two thousand seventeen. This is a separate redevelopment zone, it's not the Seaport redevelopment.
And that was done by the planning board, correct?
That was done by the Marin Council, it was started by the Marin Council.
And then it was ultimately approved by the planning board?
The, the redevelopment zone, the Marin Council asked the planning board to do a study. They did a study, agreed that it should be a redevelopment area, and then the Marin Council adopted the ordinance, creating it the redevelopment area.
Okay, so when you say that the developer created this plan.
Right.
Can you help me understand it a little better?
Yes, so declaring this area as an area in need of redevelopment is separate from this draft plan that you're voting on tonight. It's already been declared an area of redevelopment. There's other areas in need of redevelopment. Normally, when there's an area in need of redevelopment in the past so far, they were added to an existing plan called the Seaport redevelopment plan. Instead of doing that with these properties, they were never added to the Seaport redevelopment plan. That's what this plan would take the place of. So the plan that you're voting on is a plan drafted, the, the Borough planner said at the planning board that it was drafted in close coordination with the developer, is this redevelopment plan. I'm not talking about the site plan or the building plan or any of that stuff. I'm talking about the, the packet that was handed out at the last council meeting.
So I wasn't at the planning board meeting and I've heard that too. And that's why I just asked, April, it doesn't sound to me that, I, I don't know who said what or what was represented at that meeting. But, I mean, it doesn't sound to me that that is what happened, that this was done by the planning board at the direction of the previous council. So what's been presented to me, and I want to make sure that I completely understand this. We have an option to leave it alone, which I think would be really bad for the people that live there.
You would still need, you would still need a, you would still need a redevelopment plan because it's an area in need of redevelopment.
I don't think so.
Lie with the existing zoning ordinance, which apparently people feel is more onerous. So if it, if it, if there is not a redevelopment plan.
Right.
The option still is to build it per the zoning ordinance.
So let's make a redevelopment plan consistent with, yeah, consistent with the master plan, right? The master plan says this should be governed by Seaport redevelopment. Now, I'm okay if it's going to be more stringent than that, there's a couple of things I would tweak in that too. But, but the bulk variances, the, the bulk requirements here are much less in this plan. And I think that's why it's a separate plan instead of being added to the redevelopment plan. Like all of the other properties that have been declared areas in need of redevelopment.
So if the developer does not like the redo, whatever redevelopment plan we come up with, can he say, throws, scrap the entire redevelopment plan and say, I'm going to build to the CBD one?
Yes.
Okay, without, and we can do nothing about it?
Well, if he complies with the ordinance, he has to go to the planning board for zoning, for site plan approval, but he could utilize, he could, that's the existing zoning ordinance.
Okay, and how about, how was CBD one established, by, by ordinance? Okay, so it would take an ordinance to change CBD one?
We have to do the whole master plan. That's what we have to work on, is redo the master plan.
That's what I was asking, we really need to redo the master plan.
I, I agree with that also. But in the meantime, you can create an ordinance that changes CBD one?
I don't think, so again.
Well, you're starting to change your tail, you're starting to chase your tail here because that ordinance would have to go to the planning board to determine if that ordinance is consistent with the master plan.
Right.
So, anyway, I think, I think the Marin Council understands your point.
Okay.
There is some confusion that the master plan doesn't set zoning criteria. That's the ordinance, so they're two different things, they don't.
Yeah.
They're not.
But you, if you were to do this, this gentleman just suggested and change the CBD one zoning requirements. That has to go back to the planning board to determine whether or not that's, just like this one.
Right.
If it's compliant with the master plan.
Well, I think it would because the master plan also says that these properties should be in the Seaport redevelopment plan. Which is three and a half stories, parking.
Right, but the, but the developer does not need to adhere to that.
Because not the CBD, it's not in the Seaport redevelopment.
But the master plan says.
It should be.
But even if it was, the developer can just say, I'm just going to do CBD one.
Wouldn't they need to go to the planning board?
They'd have to go.
To see whether it complies with the master plan or not?
There's three or four things going on here now, hold on. I think you started with, what if, what if you just amended the CBD one zoning plan? That zoning ordinance like this one, after it was presumably discussed, you know, uploaded on our first reading, we go to the planning board to determine whether or not it's consistent with the master plan. Does that answer your question? I, I, you know, we're starting to, as I said earlier, we're starting to chase our tail a little bit here. I think that they, everyone understands your point.
Okay, I would say, I would say, you know, what I would ask is that we're looking at this as a choice between this or CBD one. And I think choice number three is make tweaks to this.
Yes, but, but that needs to not only satisfy us, but in order to keep the developer from saying, throwing up his hands and saying, I'm just going to do CBD one. It needs to, we need to negotiate that with him, right? So all I'm trying to get to is the enumeration of our choices. One is, we could build, say, go do CBD one. I don't think anybody wants that next to your property, okay? Option two is put it in the Seaport redevelopment, right?
Can you do that, Jer? Now that it's.
But you could put, right?
Could, well, well, hold on. The gentleman suggested as an option three, which is to change the requirements in the CBD one zone.
I know, that, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's one of the.
But that changes.
But that would be for future projects.
For future projects and everyone else that's in the CBD. For future projects and everyone else that's in the CBD one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm trying to deal with what's, what, what's going on with this property right now.
Right.
Yeah. So we've already determined that if, if CBD one is just to stay CBD one, building to those specs is not attractive-
Okay.
For this piece of property.
Right.
Right? I think everybody agrees with that. We could also put it in the Seaport redevelopment, which has a different set of standards, which may not, also may not be attractive to the developer.
That's a notion, yes.
So this is what's negotiated to meet in the middle.
Well, that's what the plan is now after discussions and negotiations with the redevelopment, if that's correct.
But, okay, I'm sorry.
All right, we'll move on. Yes, sir.
Library Rentals, 201 Ninth Avenue. Bought my home on Ninth Avenue 40 years ago, so I've been around for a while. We have on Ninth Avenue, a very, very nice block. Nobody in this crowd wants to see it ruined by a four-story building next to a residential house. Now, guys, I sat on the planning board for seven years, okay? I was involved in this. My fault, I know. But never once was it mentioned that there was a four-story building. What was brought to us, and April was there, Brian McGovern was there, was a group of things from Taylor Hardware down to thing, and they said, "This is in disrepair. We want to give the owners a break." I'm thinking of Joe over Taylor Hardware, okay? And to give them a break, we have to pass this to be them reassigned to a, excuse me, an area in need. That's why we voted for it. To sit up here and say that we voted for this building is absolutely disingenuous. That was not how it was presented to us.
We're not saying that.
Okay. But you know something? It's kind of your job to figure this out. There's a really simple solution. Let Main Street do the plan that this gentleman wants to do. On Ninth Avenue, keep it down to the stand, to that 36-foot thing. Don't have it higher than Brett's house. Don't have his kid grow up in the shadows. And don't tell me there's not a way to do it because there is. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Gary Lockwood, Fourth Avenue. With all the redevelopment that's going on with Fifth Avenue, what you planned for Ninth Avenue and what's going up by the railroad tracks and all the McMansions that are getting torn down and getting rebuilt, how long is it before the infrastructure starts to fail? Before this water, especially the sewer? I have neighbors here that have been here all their lives and they haven't seen any upgrades in the sewer system or the water system. It's going to fail sooner or later. I, I think I would address it sooner than later. Thank you.
Yes?
Jerry Buckafusco, Fifth Avenue. Councilman Corvelli, I just want to straighten out what I think was an incorrect, or you might be having misinformation. If this property, well, let's just say property in the Seaport redevelopment zone currently, if somebody wants to build there, they must follow that plan. They don't have the option to negotiate, correct? Why is that?
Well, they always have the right to go to the planning board for what's, what's called a deviation from the approvals. So they have the right to do that.
The-
But like any other zoning ordinance, they have to comply.
But they don't have, but they-
I'm sorry.
The Seaport Development Plan though specifically says, number one, there should be no use variances, right? And number two, the likelihood that the planning board would give them a variance based on the Seaport plan that has been voted on by the council is basically zero. Okay? So that's the point I want to get across to you, that it's not a negotiation between the developer and whatever the plan is.
This is not in the Seaport.
No, but you could make it. You could just simply, they've done it three times before. They've amended the plan by adding more properties. It's very simple. You could say that whole block, five to whatever it is, becomes part of the Seaport redevelopment plan. Case closed. That's it. That's what I suggest you should do. It's very easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Tom?
I don't want to open a hornet's nest here, but I was on the planning board for the re, right, the re-
Tom Burke.
Tom Burke, Tenth Avenue. Catty cornered the property in question, by the way, so I'm going to have to recuse myself when it comes up. But this issue about Seaport redevelopment, the area in question originally was part of the Seaport redevelopment plan. And I'm not sure, April probably has a better history of that. For some reason, I think even with lawsuit or something coming, going through Trenton and Community Affairs, those, I think Eighth, between Eighth or maybe Ninth Avenue, south, east of Main Street, were removed from the Seaport redevelopment plan for, I don't know what reason. So they currently are not part of the Seaport redevelopment plan. Why they were removed, I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but they were part and were removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mark Pfeifer, 319 Fifth Avenue. Even if you, it does go down to a, to a three-story building, I'm just, want to be sure there's no pilots involved in this at all?
We didn't even get there yet. That, that comes into redevelopment-
Would you even consider doing a pilot?
No, there's not going to be a pilot.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh.
Mike Haverstick, 507 Ninth Avenue. I just want to touch base on a couple of points I brought up at the planning board meeting. It's more concerned from a public safety standpoint, looking at the schematic that was thrown up today. The parking lot is fenced in totally. Today, there exists the ability to go from Ninth Avenue to Tenth Avenue, which a lot of people do, primarily at the length of time of the Ninth Avenue light. That is not there. All cars or all motor vehicle traffic is going to be forced onto Ninth Avenue. It's a very congested intersection as is, especially in the summertime with the concerts in the park, the restaurants and bars in the area. Now, Jack's Liquor License is going to go over to the Brew House and at least what's in the, I believe was Tap Info, or one of the news sources that had them doing catering now for weddings and things like that. So parking will be at a premium. With this congestion, it, it expands down into Ninth Avenue already. St. Rose, a lot of the students park on the 500 block. You have the Union Firehouse there. You have the First State Station there. Now you're going to throw a further density. It could be a safety hazard for people, the, the first responders to get to locations where they're needed. Also, living across the street from a rental, it's a two, it's a duplex with a bungalow in the back. I know they say, well, the target families. The target families across the street are basically millennials. There are at least four to six living on each side of the house and then two in the back of the house. Off the bat, with their significant others, friends coming down for the weekend, there's 16, 18 cars associated with that one house, taking up more than half the parking available. And now you're going to compound that factor. These are, their target audience is basically going to be real estate investors renting out the units, which is going to have, instead of 1.5, you know, more than likely, two to four cars per unit, which, where are they going to go? Down Ninth Avenue. So again, and also, I guess one last point, I'm sorry. It's my, that intersection at Ninth and Main is basically dead center between the two elementary schools, and there's a lot of foot traffic during the course of the day. Now, I, I know I've already experiencing issues with the garage underneath the new apartments or new condos, whatever they are, 10th and Railroad. Once the gates go down, lights change, cars shooting in and out. And today, almost broadside at a Cadillac Escalade, shooting through that little turn to get into the garage. It's, uh, we've had the discussion, parking's a problem, but it, it's getting dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Up, back there.
Anita McRiley, Riverdale Department. As always, my concern is the fire department. Can a fire truck go around these buildings? With each building, and with each piece of building that you put in, each apartment, you're adding more residents to the town and you're putting George's life in, in danger. You're putting George's son's life in danger. We have a fire truck crisis. It, we are fire trucks. Our oldest fire truck is 2008, which means every other fire truck is older than that. You are adding population to the town. You are adding structures that are four stories high. You're adding gated parking so a fire truck can't get around. Doesn't the fire company have to come and check these things out? I mean, you're putting people's lives in danger. I, I just don't understand how we could build anything until we fix our fire truck crisis. Thank you.
Yes? Can I ask Terry a question real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
This ordinance that we're, asked to review here tonight, that we're getting all this feedback on, we're not approving this plan, correct? It still has to go back to the planning board for approval?
Yeah, it has to go back to the planning board for approval.
So this, what the developer presented us tonight was just, is a conceptual project?
Well, yes and no. If, if you approve this ordinance and you approve that plan, the developer can go to the planning board and say, "This is the approved plan." Just like it's an approved zoning ordinance, and it's in compliance with the zoning ordinance, it's in compliance with the plan. There would presumably be no reason to deny the application.
Or the developer could go to the zoning board with a plan that's in compliance with the zoning and put a building that's 10 feet off of the property line.
We go to the planning board for that also, but yes.
We go for the planning board for that too.
It would be in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
So if we didn't change it to make it more restrictive-
Right. The only thing that-
The, the developer could revise the plan, have it bigger, bulkier-
Yes.
Closer to the property line, meet the requirements, and go to the planning board and get it approved.
Yes.
And the other part of this, that, uh, in this plan, it has to go to the TDRC, which is the Technical Design and Review Committee, for, for what colors are going to be, what, what the siding's going to be, what it's going to look like. So that's a whole nother committee where if it gets built in the CBD one, it's not required to do that. So you don't have to have porches or-
Variants in the zoning ordinance as to the, what the building looks like in terms of-
So all these upgraded materials, the brick, the cedar siding, all that stuff, Oliver could say, "I'm just going to build a box," and, I'm not saying he's going to, but he could value engineer more expensive building materials out, build a building with less quality, closer to the property line, under the current zone.
That's correct.
And it wouldn't be before us. It wouldn't even have to come before us.
No, it would just go to the planning board.
Okay. All right, yes?
Hi, Mark Deloya, 603 Ninth Ave. Something I wanted to mention that I hadn't really heard discussed is Ninth Avenue is our town square, Piano Plaza. It's a beautiful, open-air venue. Do we really want a mammoth structure eclipsing the sky directly in front of our town square? Just so a developer can further line his pockets?
Yes?
Tom Drewdown, 605 Ninth. I have one simple question. All these great people here, nobody wants this. Would you please look out here and look at these people? They don't want it. I don't want it. You're our leaders. We voted for you guys. We asked you to trust. Don't make this town what it isn't. Brett brought it up before. What do you want to do? Change the character of this town? Putting up four stories like on end? You want to put that on end? You guys doing this, you led mostly your leadership, right? But none of you will be where we are when it's done. Mark, you're on Ocean Avenue. You're on 11. I get it. You won't deal with what we're going to deal with. We're asking these nice, wonderful people that we talk to, who love this town as I love it. You can't sit on that desk and not hear what we're saying to you.
But we do. We hear loud and clear.
You're not doing anything about it.
Yes, we are.
Let me tell you-
Yes, we are.
Stop. You're not going to move.
If we do nothing here-
That's great.
If we do nothing here, do you understand the developer could go and do what he needs to do all the way back?
Do you have no authority?
The, the, the zone right now is 45-foot high.
I understand that.
It, it allows for four stories. The density is controlled by parking, so he could take out the whole, and underneath, put all the parking he needs in and, and have his building.
So the council has no authority?
Well, not with the current zoning. Not with the current zoning and the change. Yes, and that take, that takes time. We have to do a whole, the whole thing has to be revamped.
Hey, hey, listen, we're, we're-
I'm not getting into an argument.
We're, we're in a difficult situation up here, but I want to make something clear. This is not about what we want or don't want. This is about the choices that we have. And the choices that we have are to make it better or to leave it really bad. And I think it's our responsibility up here to do the right thing for the residents of this town and have a project. And that choice may still not be what we want, but I think it's really clear, and we, we've heard a lot, that the residents want us to do, you know, to want to redo the master plan. And, you know, that's something that's in the works certainly to be done. So, so don't say, I mean, I just, people are saying this is what we want or don't want, and that's just, that's not the case.
Yes, Mike?
Mike Long, Ocean Avenue. And there are two sides to every story, two sides to every coin. And I do not agree with the gentleman who was just up here. Not everyone in this room is opposed to this project because I am not opposed to it. In fact, when I looked at the presentation tonight, I'm now in favor of it. And also, I wouldn't want anyone to think, just because I don't live on Ninth Avenue between, just off of Main Street, that it's easy for me to say that because a few planning board meetings or Board of Adjustment meetings earlier in the year, there was a project that came up right across the street from me, the White House. And there was a lot, a large contingent of people who were opposed to that. And I was asked about it and publicly, and, and I was in support of it because I thought it was good for the community. I thought it was good for the property values. And in speaking with my wife tonight, someone mentioned Hoboken before. Coincidentally, I worked in Hoboken for 25 years, starting in 1979. And I heard a lot of similar concerns, complaints, as we're hearing tonight. And 20 years ago, when that town was changing. And it did go through an unbelievable transformation. And today, I don't think there's anyone in, in the town of, the city of Hoboken who would argue with what their property values are now and how it's become a vibrant community on Main Street, along the water, it's on the water. There's a lot of similarities between Belmar and Hoboken that, there's-
All right, let him speak. Go ahead, Mike.
We, we have three children. They're going to be here a lot longer than I am. And they love Belmar even more so than we do. They went to school here. They're growing up here. They're the ones who are going to inherit our property. And they want positive things. They, they're not opposed to change. So anyway, despite how everyone feels, it took a little bit of courage to get up here and, you know, go against the, the common thread. And I just wanted to let you know that I think that there are other people that feel like I do. They may not want to stand up and speak like this, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice another side of the story.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.[600.16][600.16](APPLAUSE).
Rose DeGagna, 201 Ninth Avenue. I just want to ask you, will there be shadows on your house from this building? No, there won't. There won't. Okay. Couple of things. When Mr. McCracken, Mr. Walsifer, and Mrs. Wan were running for office, I talked to you about this, because this bothers me, the redevelopment, the overdevelopment. I won't even call it redevelopment. It's overdevelopment. And in the process of running for office, you agreed with me. We don't need all this intense building and stuff. I guess things have changed, but I would like to ask, I know there were some people clapping, and that's why everybody's entitled to opinion, but how many people out there don't want this project? Can you raise your hand?[651.54][651.54](APPLAUSE). Okay. So you're looking out there. I'm going to ask you, what do you look out there? What do you see? What do you see?
Well, we're not going to answer that. Come on. We have to make decisions up here. They're hard decisions.
Yeah, but you know what?
They are hard decisions.
They are hard decisions.
We are listening to everybody.
They are hard decisions, but there's a lot of people out here that are looking at you and saying, "Are they going to support me as a resident and a voter, or are they going to support a developer?"
We have to look at what's best for Belmar. That's what we're all looking at.
But you know what? It's not, we are Belmar. Not you. We are Belmar.
Do you understand if we do nothing, what the developer could do?
Why don't you just...
But you don't understand that.
Why don't you just leave the property alone? Just leave it alone.
You don't think that property will ever get developed? No, that's never going to happen. It's going to get developed.
Well, it doesn't have to happen on your watch.
But do you understand there are things in place that the developer don't even have to come to us? He could just develop it.
We can't do that as private citizens. If I knock my house down, I can't go as long as I want to.
Sure you can. Sure you can. If you're all in, if you are in what you could build, setbacks and everything else, you could build what you want there.
But they're not in...
And you wouldn't have to come to any planning board.
They're not, but they're not in conformity. And the planning board, and thank God, she's not here tonight, God bless, Councilwoman Wan, she said, "We need to relook at the Seaport redevelopment and the whole redevelopment thing." People were chosen, and I'm not doing this on your watch, it was on other watches, people that were representing us, and then their handpicked groups, did this redevelopment plan. We don't like it. We don't want it. What do we do? I'm asking you, what do we do to stop it before something else, before this goes up and something goes where Jax is and stuff? What do we do as citizens to stop the Seaport redevelopment? Step back, relook at it. Make it three stories high. Maybe two and a half or something like that. Make it livable, so that it's still a little town. What do we do? I'm asking you.
One of the council people, that maybe it's time to look at the master plan.
Yes.
And that would be, well, that's answered your question.
Yes, but how soon? After everything gets redeveloped, then we are Hoboken?
Well, I'm not going to argue.
Okay, okay, but I'm, this is my neighborhood. But actually, the whole town is my town. I drive through the town. I'm very proud of the town, minus the building on Tenth Avenue. But I, sometimes I don't think that you, that you guys are listening to us. I really don't. And you know what? You come around when you're running for reelection. You two gentlemen sat with my husband on the porch and talked, and that's great. That's wonderful. You talked about committees where you got feedback from the community. That's great. This is feedback from your community. This is the way we feel. Okay? It's really important to us. Thank you.[836.13][836.13](APPLAUSE).
Elaine Giordano, 605 Ninth Avenue. I had something written, but I just get this vibe that I'm wasting my time. It's a big waste of time. Mayor, I had a sense in the way you presented yourself this evening that you kind of have your mind made up, and I'm really not sure about Councilman McCracken and Councilman Carvelli, and I don't know, Mr. Brennan. I don't, you're very quiet.
I'm a thinker.
You're a thinker, okay. And sir, I guess when you're sitting in this capacity, part of our tax dollars, right? You're, yes, sir. So, but I know you, it doesn't always feel that way when the attorney is sitting there. Sometimes I feel like it's, you're working for, I don't know, something else. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm saying...
I'm not suggesting it, you said it.
Yeah, well, no, no. But I'm saying to you, you said, "Well, I don't want to argue with you," to the other woman. And what I'm saying is, no, we don't want to argue, but we would love some advice from our perspective. So you know, the last attorney at the, at the, at the planning board meeting, he heard the people, he actually said, "Well, you have some options here." And he was talking to the, to the planning board about some of the other options they had. And I have a feeling that his advice, and plus what he heard from folks, may have swayed that planning board to a 5-4, saying that this particular plan is not in compliance with the master plan. But there's something else that puzzles me. Who cares if it's not in compliance? Why did that even waste the planning board's time? Because if there's a special plan, well, because the master plan always says, I've read it so many times, it always harkens back to the Seaport redevelopment plan. So if we're not a part of the Seaport redevelopment plan, then why was that little two lots even discussed? It's wasting the time of the planning board, wasting your time tonight. So where are we? We're a ship with no mooring, those two lots, and those of us who live on Ninth who don't want it. It's a ship out there without a captain, sailing around in the seas. That's what it is. Could you please bring us to safe landing? Could you please maybe table this and say, "Listen, we need to figure out where we want Block 95 to be." And by the way, I remember that horrific sketch in The Coast Star that you guys were referring to. I, you know, I'm pretty good at this, so I could be wrong. I believe our then mayor, in that very same article, said, "Oops, Block 95? We meant to add that." Do you remember all those blocks that were added to the Seaport redevelopment and master plan? But Block 95 wasn't. But the mayor said, "We meant to do it." I'm pretty sure that he was quoted in that article. If there was, let's just say, there was an intention, and somehow Block 95 was left out, isn't it worth stopping before we do this and find out? It's, it's not that no, no one wants to see something better. It's what we want to see.
Can you, can you describe for us what you'd like to see there?
I can. Mm-hmm. I can. But you know what I'm going to do? Brett, could you describe what we'd like to see? Because I defer to you.
I think it was clear what he wanted to say. He didn't want...
Like I said before, it's not far off, truthfully. It's not far off. You know, I was happy that the building plan that was, you know, presented tonight was 40 feet instead of 30. That was, that was good. The four stories is killing me. And it's killing me, and I, and I understand that it's technically right in line with the height of some of the other buildings. But I'm half-concerned that it's going to open the floodgates for other stuff, that it's going to set a precedent of four stories, and then, and then it's going to be, you know, the Wild, Wild West, everybody's, everybody's doing four stories. Now, what about, what about, one of the things that the Seaport redevelopment has in it, it's called a step back, right? So maybe, maybe on Main Street, it's tall, but maybe as you get closer to the house, it goes down a little bit, right? Like, we're not, it's not that far off, to tell you the truth, you know, but I don't think, I think it needs another round. I think, I think it needs a little bit of tweaking.
Okay. Thank you.[1154.65][1154.65](APPLAUSE). Oh, that's it. Sorry, there you are. Come on. I was thinking about it. One question I have is, what constitutes the criteria for need to redevelop? Where did that term come from?
The redevelopment statute.
No typos, though, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
No typos? Okay, go ahead.
The, typos was the wrong word, but you can make fun of it, that's all right.
It's okay. Go ahead.
I know, it's all right. The statute has about eight or nine criteria to determine what, whether something's in an area in need of redevelopment. There's about seven or eight different things in the statute. Need them all right now?
Well, I'm just curious, and who determines what those seven or eight criteria are?
Well, legis, it's a law. The planning board has to decide whether or not the property fits within that criteria, whether or not in fact...
Who created the law?
Trenton.
Oh, Trenton, okay. So that's like a general assembly thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Signed by the governor, yeah. It's probably...
Okay, so that's actual law, okay.
About 20 years old.
So, that leads me to my second question. In a CBD-1, does the council and/or the planning board, they can't just arbitrarily, you know, approve a project? You know, what we're seeing here tonight is that, you know, this is the better, this is the best of two evils, you know, to go with this project as being presented, because if we don't allow, or if the council doesn't approve it, then they're going to go back to the CBD-1. Now, there's no control over CBD-1 in terms of what they can construct there?
Let me make it, let me try this as an example, and it's, you know, a very basic example. If a zoning ordinance allows 10 houses on that property, and they go to the planning board with 10 houses on that property, very basic, it can't be denied. If it's complying with the bulk variance, it's complying with the ordinance. I think what the council, the council people were saying is that in the CBD-1 zone, if the applicant were to come in with something that fits in that zone without variances, without design waivers, then they can build 10 feet from the property, et cetera, et cetera. So they would have to go to the planning board for site plan approval, but it's what we refer to as an approval by right, because they're complying with the law. That's what I think we're getting at.
Okay. So again, we're going to go back to what's being presented as the worst of two evils.
Well, that's not, that's not for me to say. That's what you say. And that's what I think what the council has said, yes.
Okay. Don't change the time on the boardwalk to 8 o'clock. I knew you were coming up with that. Yes.
Hi, Arlene Nappel, 115th Avenue. I would like to just start out and say, I've had the privilege, I don't know how many people have actually been in the Bank of America building, but it is a glorious, gorgeous, historic building. If it was Ocean Grove, you would not be able to tear this beautiful building down. That being said, I understand what you're talking about. This is allowed, this isn't allowed. And I've headed up to here with people making the most of the properties. If you're allowed to build 30% of the property, why did 10th and the Trax be able to build on 95% of the property? I don't know what the numbers are, 500%, but that building is ridiculous on 10th and the Trax. 50 years ago, some undesirables on whatever board said, "Okay, Marina Towers, go ahead, go nine stories up on the river." And now, you see the next step down, so you've got the extra-large and then the large. I'm tired of the overdevelopment. You had mentioned the property, the White House, Mike. That was one single lot. They could have given them a variance for two, but they approved six units there. I'm just tired of this. I'm tired of the overdevelopment. You have an elementary school, Belmar Elementary, with this 50-foot structure right there. Are these people staring at the children all day? There should be a minimum two parking spots per unit. Now, if you took that Bank of America building and you did two or three commercials on the first floor, and let's say on the next two floors, you had two condos each, you'd have four condos and two or three stores. The owners, the owners would be able to sell the condos 600 to 1.2 million, depending on how beautiful they make them, the stores they could rent or they could sell. There'd be enough parking in the back. There's ways of developing it, all right? I don't want to live in Hoboken. Hoboken's fantastic, but you have foot traffic, you have cabs, you have buses, you've got trains. I know we have a train, but those people just go right into the city. We depend on our cars. I have been, since they approved the four-story building, every time I drive down 10th or up 10th, I take pictures of the traffic. And you should see the traffic now, and the things coming and going, and it's not fully occupied. I, like I said, I'm up to here with what's going on in town. From Marina Towers, okay, fine, that was a mistake. Okay, 10th and Trax is a mistake. But Ninth Avenue, Piano Plaza, it doesn't deserve this. We deserve better in our town. I remember, I've been in town over 30 years. I remember when Pringle was here. He was like, "Get rid of the multifamilies. We want to be like Spring Lake." I was fine with that. I don't see Ocean Grove trying to be like Long Branch or Hoboken. Why should Belmar be overoccupied? We can't handle the traffic and the parking right now. I don't know if you guys drive up 10th or 8th Avenue and get stuck in that gridlock in the summer, but it is the most frustrating thing ever. We don't deserve that. We should be able to bike around town, we should be able to park in town, we should be able to go to our stores, and that's all possible. You want to develop a property? Sure. Two parking spots each. And I'm sure there was something else I wanted to say, but thank you for your time.[1561.13][1561.13](APPLAUSE).
Yes, Jerry.
A question that I would have for council would be, right now, you're, you're setting the picture as, well, you know, we have CBD-1, or we have our plan, and if we don't do our plan, then the developer is going to go to CBD-1, right? I think you have another option, and that is a timeout. In other words, seek legal counsel. What can the council do to temporarily put a stop to development until you decide whether or not this property or the other properties next to it should become part of the Seaport redevelopment plan? I don't want people to have the impression that this is going to be a race to the planning board, like, "Oh, you know, they didn't pass it tonight, so tomorrow they're going to go to the planning board, and they're going to put in for a building that's four stories and 10 feet off the, off the residential property." Ask council for an opinion. What can we do to slow this down so that we can see what should go there, whether we should modify our current plan, whether we should add it to the Seaport plan? The sense of urgency that I'm getting is really, I think, false.
Let me try to answer a part of it.
And I think...
Can I answer your question?
No, I mean, I'm talking to the council. I'm telling them that they need to speak with you about what your options are, because you do have other options. I just don't think you're aware of them at this point.
I was trying to give them to you, yeah. Stay there, sir. The, please, the council always has the right to look, in cooperation with the planning board, to look how we should change zoning ordinances. It comes in with a master plan, all the things we talked about. The law changed about four or five years ago. Previously, before that, towns and municipal bodies would change an ordinance, become more restrictive, after an application was filed with the planning board. In other words, let's say that the zone allowed 300 apartments, and the guy applies for 300 apartments. Before the matter was heard, before the planning board, the governing body would change the ordinance to only allow 100 apartments. That was allowed. It's no longer allowed. The law was changed. You cannot change the zoning once the application to the planning board is submitted. So to answer your question and take it to a very big extreme, they could come in next week with a plan which complies with the CBD-1 zone now.
Right.
And if they do that, we can't change the zone. We can change the zone before they do that.
Right. But the council could effectively have a special meeting at the end of this week and declare that they're going to change the ordinance, or they're going to move that property into, into the, into the Seaport redevelopment plan.
Well, they can declare anything they want.
Can the council say it's not going to accept any applications for redevelopment?
No, hold on a second. If the council decides to do anything like you just suggested, it could take two or three months. It's got to go to the planning board, got to come back, which is all fine. In the meantime, the developer can submit an application in conformance with the existing zoning ordinance.
Why would it take two or three months to move the properties that have already been designated in need of redevelopment into the Seaport plan?
You have to develop a plan.
You're moving it into the Seaport redevelopment plan. It's been done three times before.
And it would have to go to the planning board for review. I mean, you know better than I.
No, I don't, I'm asking the question.
I'm telling you, it would take, first of all, this is December. If the ordinance were to be applied for, if they had a special meeting next week to answer, you know, and adopt an ordinance, which I think would be not the appropriate way to do it, has to go to the planning board, presumably sometime in January, because December's too late. Then it would have to come back to the town. I said three months, it's at least two months.
Right. So, in other words, the developer, by proposing a development, basically is putting the pressure on the council to do something.
I don't know about that. If the developer makes an application in conformance with the existing ordinances, and the application's filed, we can't change the ordinance requirements.
But the town could, saying the developer doesn't do that. They could amend the Seaport plan--
Absolutely.
And move these properties into the Seaport plan.
Sure, absolutely.
And if they do that, it probably would behoove them to move all of them into the Seaport plan.
You're going further than I--
That's my opinion. Because taking two properties out of whatever are there is, to me, is silly. Because what are you gonna do when the next two properties come up? You gonna have another plan, you gonna have more people coming, saying, oh, we don't like what that is? Oh, you made it three and a half stories, you did this, you did that. It really needs to go into the Seaport redevelopment plan. Because that's what basically is controlling Main Street. And the way it looks, and I'm being cynical at this point, Main Street's gonna look like Jersey City. It's gonna have stores on the bottom, and you're gonna have apartments on top, because that's all we've had since the Seaport redevelopment plan has gone into effect. You have one on Eighth, you have one on Fifth, and now you're gonna have one on Ninth. That's it. So much for the Seaport Village.
Hi, Michelle Lomas. Is the owner of the lots here today?
The developer's here.
Is the owner?
Yes, they said yes.
Are you the owner? I'm sorry. So, after everything you've heard today, will you consider revising your plan?
Yeah, I don't think that's appropriate at all.
I just want to know if it's a consideration.
That would be a discussion for us and him. We're not gonna have a discussion with you and the developer now, because-- No, because we're not.
It's just a simple yes or no, would you consider, would you consider changing the plan?
It would be a discussion with our planner and us to see what kind of changes we are gonna make. Anyone else?
Do I reintroduce myself?
Yeah.
Yes. You asked me what I wanted, and I deferred--
Okay, just reintroduce yourself.
I do have to reintroduce myself. Elaine Giordano, 605 Ninth Avenue. I think it was Mr. McCracken, Councilman McCracken, did you say, you, what do I want? And I deferred to Brett. Well, I'd like to tell you what I'd like. I'd like to see a more reasonable building. I'd like to see the height, and by the way, I know we are at that ship floating out there and we're not a part of the Seaport redevelopment plan. But there's the letter of things and the spirit of things, and I just think that this spirit is wrong. That we are, because we're so central, that Block 95 is so central to everything else going on that is a part of the plan. So, what I'd like to see is something that reflects the Seaport redevelopment plan. Whether it's in it officially or not, it's a good plan. And by the way, there was a hell of a lot of input when Kenny Pringle, and Kenny and I have spoken a couple of times. Be interesting to ask him, I guess you'd have to ask him yourself, what he thinks of these four-story buildings. So, I won't answer for him. But interestingly enough, there was this whole page seventeen of the Seaport redevelopment plan that talked about when buildings come back to residential areas, and guess what? They're supposed to step down. There's supposed to be a decline. So, if, if the first house is thirty-six feet, then what faces them, what they look at should be no higher than their house. And I guess, from the developer's perspective, this just isn't fiscally enough. I understand that, but I think you've had great advantage, sir. I think you've had an opportunity to meet many times with planners and so on and have input. Where was our input when this was being discussed? Mark, you said transparency to me, you told me, you said--
That's why I gave direction to our planners, to make it as close to the redevelopment as they could get it, as what is in place right now, and keep it away from that property.
The Seaport redevelopment plan does not mandatory say you must have. And neither, by the way, does Central Business District One. If Central Business District One says you can build four stories, it doesn't say you must build four stories.
Well, it's gonna be no higher than, it's gonna be lower than the property that's on Eighth Avenue. The problem is, what you're looking at is the first floor of those properties are sixteen feet because of the retail. So, if the--
I'm seeing four stories.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Whether it's four stories or whatever, whatever it turns out to be, it's lower than what Eighth Avenue is.
Is thirty-six feet as low as it is?
What do you mean, I don't get it.
The building.
It's forty-five, and that's what it allows in the master plan.
But again, the master plan hearkens back to the Seaport redevelopment plan for its architectural design. And the Seaport redevelopment plan, on page seventeen, talks about step downs. Gosh, I don't want to keep--
I'll have to read it, I'll ask our planners--
Well, geez, I sure hope so, because guess what?
That's what we hire professionals for. If you think that I'm here every day looking through that plan, no, that's not, I give direction. And the planners and the engineers--
Mark, I would like not to have to read the plan also. I'd love to be able to, like, go home and do the things I want to do, but here's the thing. I like the idea of tabling everything, and I like the idea of revisiting, where is this unmoored, uncharted sailboat sailing out there, two blocks? Because I think it is a slippery slope. Please, don't do this. And I understand there's tremendous pressure to do it. Please don't do it, please resist the pressure. Thank you.
It's not gonna matter. I mean, if you'd like to. If you want to come to the mic and introduce yourself and respond, you can.
Hi, John Tykina again, the planner for the property owner. Thank you. I'll answer the short question first. So, the board understands the step back of the Seaport redevelopment plan. Okay? The maximum height at the ten-foot setback from a residential property's own boundary shall be twenty-six feet. That is the first step in the Seaport redevelopment plan. The maximum eve height at twenty-five feet shall be thirty-six feet. Okay, so when you get to twenty-five feet, you can go up to thirty-six feet. Beyond thirty-five feet, the maximum height shall be no greater than forty-nine feet, six inches. So, a building at forty feet would be permitted to be forty-nine feet, six inches, in accordance with the Seaport redevelopment plan, adjacent to the property on Ninth Avenue. Right out of your plane.
Thank you.
There was a mention, also an additional mention about FAR. And the Seaport redevelopment plan has a provision in it that says if you provide interior parking, the FAR requirements do not apply. So, again, the Seaport redevelopment plan, as an inducement to say, we want streetscapes that are attractive, that have buildings along the streets and our sidewalks, not parking lots, we would like the developers to put the parking inside the building. So, it was luxury interior parking, not exterior. So, to encourage that, the FAR requirements went out the window. So, under Seaport redevelopment plan, a building with interior parking could be forty-nine feet, six inches tall and not have an FAR requirement.
Your current proposal is--
The current proposal--
It's forty-six feet, was it?
It would be forty-six feet, could be forty-five to conform with the CBD one, and would be limited to being thirty units. As opposed to a building with an unrestricted FAR.
Why don't you indicate what a FAR is?
FAR is the floor area ratio of, the ratio between the area of the lot and the area of the building. So, as Mr. Lomas described on our lot, which is approximately twenty-three thousand square feet, you could, under the FAR of two, you could build a building of forty-six thousand square feet. So, the proposed redevelopment plan puts an FAR on the building. The Seaport redevelopment plan wouldn't have one. So, again, the redevelopment plan that you are proposing is more restrictive than the Seaport redevelopment plan. It is a lower building, it has an FAR limit, at a lower height. So, again, you know, a few other things that come up. To say that it is rushed, when a property owner bought a property in 2016, the planning board started a planning board process in 2017, and has proceeded to 2019, to say that as a rush to judgment or a rush to the planning board is, it boggles the mind. So, you know, in every instance, in absolutely every instance, the property owner came forward and when was presented with a request to make the plan what the town perceived better. And the town drove this process. And at every standpoint, the town would draft a document, and it was given to the professionals, and the owner would say, what does this do to us, can we make something work, how do we do this? And it would reduce the overall development of the property. And at some point, you hit a point where you're saying, why am I dealing with redevelopment? I'll just go build CBD one and be done with it, and not have to deal with all this stuff. And just file an application, go through the process, and come out the other end. And when you say, you know, why did the Seaport redevelopment stop? And the short answer is, it ran into the CBD one. So, when you're talking to property owners and saying, hi, property owner, we want to put you in a redevelopment, there would typically want to be an incentive for that developer, for that property owner, not the developer, for the property owner to want to do something with their property, because the easiest thing they can do is nothing. They can sit there and be fat, dumb, and happy, and collect their rent or whatever it is, and, you know, the Cagobat theory of investing. If I pick it up for nothing, if I get a nickel, I'm great. And that's not what a community wants. Community wants investment in their town. So, when you ran into the CBD one and said, oh, we're not gonna be four stories anymore, we're gonna be three and a half, and the property owners are gonna say, no, wait, I don't want that, I'm happy with what I have, I'll keep CBD one. Leave me alone. And typically, that's what a town will do. Say, okay, we'll leave you alone, we'll leave you out. This property owner said, okay, we want to do something that's better for the town, we want to work with the town. They worked with the prior administration, and then came forward and to work with this administration. That's the thing about owning property. You know, if I own a widget business, and I don't like the way my widget business is going because the town is being mean to me, I can pick my widget business up and move it to the next town. But when you own nine hundred Main Street in Belmar, you don't have a choice. You have to work with Belmar, because you can't pick your land up and move it. So, this property owner has done that, they've worked with Belmar, and again, it is two choices. And I understand people think I can, we can do lots of things that, you know, as the attorney said, that's not how the law is written anymore. But there's two choices. There's CBD one, four stories, all the other stuff. And/or there's the redevelopment plan that's before you. There are your two good choices. I mean, you can go Seaport as well, but I think I just pointed out, that's not the best kettle of fish either. It's not the panacea that people are making out to be, which, and maybe it's the panacea could something different. I understand that, but, you know, when you're up here making the hard choices that you have to make as a governing body, I think that your two choices are CBD one and the plan that you have in front of you. And I think they're two reasonable choices. Obviously, we think the redevelopment plan works, but, you know, again, the property owner doesn't have a choice. If you say, that's not it, then they're gonna have to move forward with CBD one and do something. Because right now, the buildings are sitting there rotting, and that's not doing anybody any good.
Thank you.
Brett Lomas, 609 Ninth Ave. So, you know, that was, you know, holding the town hostage, I guess, is how you could describe that, you know. But, in the master plan, I'll read it. It is recommended that the borough include properties along the eastern edge of the Seaport redevelopment area and Blocks 95 within the Seaport redevelopment plan. So, I would suggest that any applications made to the planning board, as you were saying, you could race to the planning board and build CBD one, is that the master plan states that this should be governed by the Seaport redevelopment. Now, when I talked about step backs before, I got the idea of step backs from the Seaport redevelopment. I wasn't saying that it needed to be the exact same step backs, right? But, I like that, right? But, I will say that the distances that you gave were the closest distance, not the furthest distance, right? They said past thirty-five feet, it could be forty-nine, whatever, right? They said past thirty-five feet, it could be forty-nine, whatever, right? But up to thirty-five feet, it would be the thirty-six, I believe. In addition, the, the FAR provision for the interior parking, right, is also in this plan. It's the same provision. It was copied over from, from that. So the FAR doesn't go out the window, as, as was stated. It just doesn't include the parking area of the building, right? And the last thing I would say is that, I know that you said you wouldn't consider pilot, but this plan does include a provision that says that tax incentives are going to be used to, in the benefit of the, in the benefit of the developer. I've said before, I just want it to be reasonable, right? I just want it to be reasonable, and I don't think it's far off. All right? Thanks.
Brett, can I just ask you a question?
Yeah.
Because several, you know, I'm taking notes on what everybody says, and there's a consistent theme that people want this property put into the Seaport redevelopment plan.
And it, well, I'm...
I mean, many people have said that. This should be in the Seaport redevelopment.
As an alternative to CBD One, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
What, what is it in the Seaport redevelopment plan, in your perspective, that is better than what we would have now? Because, I mean, the owner's representative just said Seaport redevelopment plan could be worse.
So, yes, and there's, there's definitely trade-offs, I would, I would say, right? The Seaport redevelopment would limit density by limiting the parking. One of the big differences, I believe, is the parking. Another one is, is that, you know, the thirty-foot setback in this plan, right? This plan is a thirty-foot step, setback. I know that they said they're going to make it forty, but it's thirty. So at thirty feet, according to this plan, this draft plan, at thirty feet, the building could be, you know, I think they say the, the principal parts of the building are going to be forty-six feet, but the actual building can go up to fifty-two. No?
Forty-nine, I think he said, but...
No, that's in Seaport. This plan gets up to fifty-two. Yeah, like all those, yeah, yep, yep, yep.
Well, that's what we weren't going to allow. If you look at the picture, it was going to be almost even with the building right next to it.
Okay.
That, that was one of the, that was the other thing.
Yeah.
That was really on the developer about.
Is it thirty or forty? From, from the property to the back?
It's allowed thirty, but the building is forty. I mean, we could force it to say forty.
And there's just no dimension for that? Forty or forty?
It's forty.
Well, the building plan says forty, but the, the plan that you're voting on says thirty.
Yeah, the redevelopment plan says it.
Right.
But the building plan is forty.
Yeah, can we make, can we make that forty?
Yeah.
Well, all right, let's make it three and a half stories, right? All right?
All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none?
Close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, as far as ordinance, two thousand nineteen thirty-five, we need a motion to table or a motion to adopt?
April, I'm going to make a motion. We table that ordinance to a later date until we can review some of this information.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carveli?
Yes.
Now, we're going in the public section. Does anybody else have anything to say? All right. Seeing none?
A motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?